Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the morning of Thursday, Cinco de Mayo. So happy Cinco de Mayo to everyone. We excuse Councilmember Spilsbury and Luna, who are traveling and unable to attend this morning. First item on our agenda, Item 1A, and I'll allow Nancy to catch her breath before we call her and Jeff up here. But Item 1A is a presentation to discuss the Downtown Mesa Association, their current enhanced services provided, and proposed modified methodology for setting special improvement District 228 assessment rates, and funding the current and future enhanced services provided by DMA with the modified assessments. Nancy and Jeff, we're looking forward to your presentation.
Good morning, Council. Mayor Giles, congratulations, Vice Mayor. Today, we're going to talk about what we've done in the past year and some new changes that we're moving forward with next year in our fiscal year. And it's been quite an exciting year in downtown, and we're really happy about everything that's going on. So do you... Okay. So the goals of the district, you know, in most cases, what our job is, is to drive traffic downtown, to increase stuff to businesses, increase values of our properties, attract developers, attract retailers. So we do most of what we do in order to manage the environment so we are a desirable destination. So in the last year, our big initiatives and the things that have made the biggest difference that we believe downtown is our clean and safe initiatives.
Yeah, space bar.
Space bar? Okay.
Give me your piece.
Our clean team, who most of you see in the blue shirts out on the street, have made a very big difference in the look and feel of downtown and the feel of safety downtown, too. But you will see these guys cleaning morning, noon, and night. They start out cleaning all the garages, and then they go up and down the streets. They empty the trash. They power wash the sidewalks. They keep downtown very, very clean. They also deal with a lot of our street population, calling the navigators, getting people out there to try to help. And we also have the same thing with our Community Engagement Ambassador, which was a pilot program that we started this year, to see if we could have more engagement on the streets of dealing with our population, that is, on the streets, as well as communicating to all of our businesses on how we can help and what we can do for them. It was a successful program, and we're hoping, if things move forward with our new methodology, that we're going to be able to keep this program going. Main Street in Bloom was the baskets that we sold sponsorships for up and down Main Street. Our goal was to sell 30 of them, and we sold 81. A little lack of staff and supply chain issues. We are finally have them hanging on the streets. They still need to grow. We had to wait until all the plants came in, got them planted, and hung them immediately, even before they were overflowing the basket. So it's going to take a little bit of time, and bear with us, but we will have beautiful baskets downtown this summer. Our parking program, working with the city, it's... And I just want to stop and say something real quickly. This would not be possible without the amazing partnership between the Downtown Transformation Team and the DMA. It is something I've never seen in my entire career, and it has made a difference, that we are a truly public-private partnership. In this, we worked together to come up with a new parking program. We were running out of spaces downtown, and we still are. But we had a lot of people who were asking for decals for four or five cars, and we never knew how many people were parking there. And we went to a completely electronic program. All of the permits are done by license plate recognition, as well as we electronically chalk cars. We don't ever touch them. So the compliance has really worked very well. We probably freed up about 25 spaces, because now they can list as many cars as they want under their permit. But if there are two of those cars here at any time, they are violating. So we were able to free up a lot of spaces we didn't know we had, which has helped a little bit. And also, we've really done a great job of keeping everybody in compliance of paying for their decals. We had a huge delinquency when we took over the program, and we are completely up to date right now.
Before you head out from there.
Okay, go back.
I would just like to weigh in a little bit on this, about the part that matters to us, me and the city, I think, is that we have a contract amount, a contract with DMA to provide these parking services that the city has in addition to the assessment. In my time managing the DMA contract, and I'm assuming for many years before that, this will be the first year in which the revenues will actually exceed, or will meet or exceed the contract amount, to actually pay for the contract amount of the parking enforcement.
The media is...
That's a good... Considering the history of our enforcement, this is actually a very good sign. I believe it's going to exceed, and it'll become revenue source force.
It already has exceeded.
Clarify that. That doesn't mean... Is that the enforcement, or is that also the parking?
I apologize. Yes, when I say enforcement, I really meant that this is all about the electronic system making it so people are responsible for paying their bills and making it easy for them to pay their parking bills.
Right. So when they have to pay for their parking, not just paying the bill, I mean, that is the enforcement, but it's also this compliance with paying for their fair share, right?
So I had... It depends on what end of the stream you're on, you know, if you're the recipient of the parking enforcement, right? I know the Vice Mayor brought up parking meters. Is that something considered along Main, or in the future? Are we just going to go with our same parking model that we're doing today?
Personally, if I had my druthers, we really would benefit greatly by having parking meters just on Main Street and keeping our parking garages free and our lots free, because people are very willing to pay for convenience. But also, you want people to come down here and always be able to find a space on the street. And that doesn't happen when it's free and it's long-term. So you have people taking up the spaces. You also have the merchants taking up the spaces and moving their cars every three hours to move around. Once you get to a metered situation, that really changes. I don't see that happening in the near future, but I think it's something in the future that the city should consider. We will have a problem once ASU starts. After being in downtown Tempe for seven years, I will tell you, the students will take up every parking space they possibly can if it's free to them.
They should be using the light rail.
Yes, they should.
We hope. Thanks.
So back to what's been going on. The media has been something... We work with Evolve PR, and they have done a magnificent job for us over the last year and a half that they've been working for us. And we have gotten more PR than I have ever seen a city get in a very short period of time because of all the wonderful things that are going on down here with all of our development, everything that's happening. We are top of mind with the media right now, and we are in the position that I always love when we can get to the press calls us and asks us what's going on. We don't have to always push things to them. So the media has done a lot, and we've had some major, major hits of media downtown in the last year with the Best of the Valley, really, and it's Phoenix Magazine talking about how cool we are down here, the big section we had in the Business Journal. And every day, we get more and more great press about what's going on down here. Branding, we went through a process with our businesses and our property owners and the city departments, and we did a branding session and came up with a new brand for downtown, working with, mostly with the Transformation Team. We've been able to get this out into the media. We got a lot of press just on our branding, which I thought was very amazing. And you will start to see more and more of this downtown in a nice, colorful way to brighten up our downtown. Very quickly, I'm just going to go through a lot of the things that we did over the year, but one of the biggest things was we started our gift card program, which is a direct benefit to the businesses, because people buy the gift cards and they use them directly in our businesses. And we launched this mid-year in 2020, and we sold about $9,000 worth of gift cards. In 2021, we sold $28,000 worth of gift cards, which is a huge jump, but it was getting the word out about it. And it's very convenient for a lot of the businesses down here. They do Christmas gifts from it. We do teacher gifts all year long. It's something that people have really embraced, and our businesses are all taking advantage of it. Another one of our promotions, we did a lot of small promotions that just drive business down here, but another one was our Shop Small Program, which we launched in 2020. And you have to fill out a card that if you spend $100, you get entered into a drawing. And the 2020, we sold $4,200 worth of this. And in 2021, we sold $52,000 worth. It has really snowballed, and that's a testament to our tenants down here, our businesses, and how well they are promoting themselves and bringing people down here. We did the Great Honeybee Hunt, which was to support the opening of the temple, and we had 126 people come down here to come around our windows and see if they could find all the honeybees. Our Golden Mesa Day is, I think, the pride and joy of downtown. Is this year, we honored 10 of our businesses that have been here for over 75 years. I have worked in five major downtowns. I don't think there's ever been a business over 20 years in any of those downtowns. And to come here and find the thriving businesses that have been here for 75 years, and we already have 10 more over 50 years that we're going to honor next year. We worked with the city. This was a complete public-private partnership of doing I Love Mesa Day, which was probably one of the most successful events around. We brought so many people down here. I say bring them down 10,000 at a time, so they'll come back one at a time. I think we brought them down 50,000 at a time, and they're coming back in droves. Halloween is a tradition down here, and again, it was filled with kids all over. Okay, Easter, the same thing. We had a big Easter egg hunt down here. Streets were filled with little kids running up and down, picking up eggs. Tap Into Mesa was an event we did at the urging of our breweries, and it was so popular that before we even did the event, we sold 300 pre-sale tickets. We probably had... We couldn't even keep up with the volume that was happening that day. And our downtown farmer's market has been thriving. It has become much better. We moved it from the center of the MAC on to Center Street, which makes it much more visible. So we've had much more traffic since we moved it over there, and it's finally become self-sufficient. We had to put money into it to get it going, but it is now self-sufficient. Mary Main Street, our part of Mary Main Street, was we did a marketplace around the tree two of the weekends. But again, it's a wonderful event that the city puts on down here that we help to enhance, but without the partnership with the city, things like this would not be happening downtown. Okay. So now, what we looked at was, how do we move forward? How do we keep things going? So we looked at working on something, which is our new assessment or modified assessment methodology. And working with the Downtown Transformation Team, we went through a very long process now to try to make our assessments fair and equitable. But one of the things that we discovered in talking to different property owners, people were talking about how, oh, we were always able to cover all of downtown to keep it clean on the assessment that we have right now. I don't understand why we would need any more. And one of the things that we saw that was amazing to us is that we've only increased this over the last 37 years by 16%, yet inflation has gone up 177%. And the other big thing was, yes, they covered all of downtown, because at the time that they created this assessment methodology, the minimum wage was $3.38. The minimum wage today is $12.80. We cannot cover the same ground with the same amount of people with the same money anymore. And the most important part of why we looked at this is that our methodology was not fair and equitable. It was subjective. Some of the people were assessed on what their use was, which meant you might have a property here that pays $78 a year, and right next door to them, who receives the same exact services as the person next to them, is paying $1,800 a year because of what they deemed the use was. In assessment methodologies, the most important thing is to make things non-subjective. And by deciding that you have a different assessment for different uses is very subjective. So we went back and created a new methodology, starting, as we call it, from a broken place. It was not as easy to do as creating this from scratch, trying not to target different properties or look at them as a different individual property, but just as the whole. We came up with a, what we believe is a fair and equitable way of calculating our assessments. Did you want to talk about that part of the assessment?
One of the things I'd like to weigh in on this is that the reality of the situation was, is that DMA was providing services within the district based on the zones, but not based on the assessments within the zones. So there were people receiving services well beyond what they were paying for, and then in other cases, you're having property owners that were not receiving services in which they were paying for. The end goal here is to recognize that, and we had to, we struggled with this very much because assessments change. There was a significant change across the board, whether it's up or down by property owner. We struggled with it very much, because every moment, we'd look at individual properties and say, well, this is that change. And it was, we had to remind ourselves every time, is that in order to get to where we need to go, we need to essentially start from scratch and bring forward a methodology that we can stand behind and say, you are paying for the services in which you receive. The current methodology we have today, we can't stand behind that and say that.
The things that we're going to do this year is, we're going to hopefully increase our clean, safe, and beautiful initiatives. What we really feel is that management of downtown and creating that desirable destination is one of the most important things. You need to feel clean. It needs to feel clean. It needs to feel safe, and that's where we want to keep our focus this year. The next thing that we want to do is take advantage of the fact that we are hot right now, and people are looking at downtown, they're looking at Mesa, everything that's going on throughout this city, very important. When people are looking at bringing a corporation to a city, they always look at the downtown first. The health of your downtown is a reflection of the health of your whole city. So we feel that it's very important to create that feeling so that people feel good about the entire city through our downtown. There are lots of neighborhoods in Mesa, but downtown should be everyone's neighborhood. Okay, so, yes.
Talking about a scene, a streetscape, I know I've followed up with Jeff, but I just want to touch upon where we are. We talked about doing a streetscape, so doing some trees, a tree line, you know, to have a sense of place. We started on that road a few years ago, and then a lot of things have happened, including COVID. So where are we, or where can we expect to go on that project?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, we continue to have the concept for a more urban streetscape. It's completed. Funding is significant. The cost of that design, as we've estimated it roughly, is significantly higher than we had ever anticipated. We are looking at an alternative, not, I shouldn't say alternative, an interim step to go and fill in some of the empty planters now, to get a little bit of green out there where we can. We're hopeful that in the future, that we can find ways to fund it, but right now, a funding source hasn't been found. We are going to be looking at some district revitalization efforts through ARPA that we'll be presenting to Council in the near future, that could include some of that streetscape elements as its part of facade improvements with individual properties.
I think with the facade coming down, in which it needs to, it's crumbling, and it's certainly been successful on the businesses who have been able to take down the facade and reveal the beauty of the historic building. But, you know, having that, a treescape or some kind of continuous shade element is very attractive and has a sense of place where does downtown begin and end, and people, we all want to be around shade, especially in the summer. So if we can find a way to implement that in to our plans as we go into facade improvement and maybe take it off chunks, I think it would be... I hate to see all these improvements done, and then we say, oh, those trees, let's go back and do that. We need to plan for it as we go along so that we can get it done. So just want to put some support behind getting a treescape done.
Thank you.
And then later. Thank you.
Okay. So we have, we had the last council meeting to where we now have mailed out everything to the property owners about this new assessment methodology, giving them the opportunity to either ask questions, object, or tell us they approve. So what we did so that we can show you what we've told all the property owners and what they're debating on right now is, these were the zones, the existing zone, you see the red part there, that was just the area of downtown where the colonnades are. And when they created the assessment methodology at the beginning, they said that where the colonnades were was the core of downtown, and that's where they wanted to have the most services. Well, over the years, what we've seen is the core of downtown, which is what we always hope happens, has radiated out and become a much larger core. We now can go from Centennial all the way over to Country Club, where most of the activity is from our businesses, our breweries, our restaurants. So we've expanded from, it used to stop at Robson, now we'll go all the way to Country Club in order to then start radiating out from that core to make things better surrounding it. And so that was also by request of most of the businesses from Robson to Country Club. We've had a huge influx of great businesses on that street, and they wanted to be part of the core. So we've also have so much going on in our development, so we've increased Zone 2, and it's all about the services. That's what the zones are for, how much services you get in each zone. So very quickly, just to show you, right now, in Zone 1, we have existing cleaning services of three days a week. With the new methodology and this, we will be able to increase that to five days a week. And let me tell you, we're probably already close to needing seven, which is a very good problem to have, that we have so many people coming down. It used to be just absolutely dead here on Sundays. Not anymore. So as we get more and more successful, we will need more and more services. So we've just increased services in each zone, and that's what we showed all the property owners. This is what you're going to get more for what you're paying for now. And some people are paying more, and some people are paying less. It's just fair and equitable. So what each zone, this will show that, showed them what each zone gets, what type of services are in each of the zones. And then the modified methodology is very confusing, but not nearly as confusing as it is right now, which we sat down and tried to calculate the assessments from the old methodology, and we couldn't even figure out how to do it. So we said simplification is very important. So here is a very simple thing that we sent out to all the property owners on how you calculate. And we also showed them actually how to calculate in each zone, so they could put their own numbers in and check our numbers to make sure that they thought everything was right.
And it did result in a couple of property owners correcting their assessment by letting us know that their building size or something along that line was not accurate.
And it also, the county assessor is very slow in turnover and putting the new ownerships on their site for quite some time. So we did find about five or six different properties that have changed hands that were not on the assessor sites yet. So it helps us to figure out everything about who is here and what their assessment is and what they need to pay. The new budget, through this new change in the assessment methodology, we are asking the private property owners to pay an additional $75,000 above what they have been paying for the last 20 years. And that is, like we said before, almost 100% of that increase is going to go to more clean and safe services downtown. We are also requesting that the city increase their voluntary assessment, or through their contracts, the same amount that the private property owners are doing, and that's a request that we had put in with this.
Well, Council will not be acting on that request as part of the May 16th action. It will be something that staff would ask for your direction at that time. What this shows is a slight increase in the voluntary assessment for our property from 1.5 cents per square foot to 1.66 cents per square foot, an increase of approximately $25,000 to the cleaning contract to help encourage more cleaning, particularly considering the amount of city-owned property in downtown. That's frontage in which the city is having cleaned as well. And then also on May 16th, Council is considering rate, the rate increases. That includes some very small increases to the parking rates that would result in about a $27,000 a year increase in parking revenues from permit fees that we would then include into the parking contract rate.
And the timeline, we have done the draft, the plan, the methodology, the council, you set the hearing date. The notices went out to all the property owners. They have 10 more days to file protests. I don't know, we haven't asked the clerk yet whether we have gotten any protests filed. Okay. I do have to say, this is a little scary for me. I've done 22 districts. I've never had people not yelling at me. So this is a wonderful feeling that we have, that people are happy with the services and they're not, they do not seem to be complaining. So that's something that is a validation that we believe that this partnership has really created in downtown, is a new feel, a new trust, and things are happening. We will be coming back on the 16th for the final vote on that, and then we will be hitting the ground running, because our new thing will take effect this July, and we will be adding all of that immediately.
I think it's important to note Nancy also held three work sessions that were noticed out when we sent out the notice mailers, that included in that packet was the invitation to one of three or all three. How many?
Four people showed up, and they were all in support. So it was very, it's just all very strange, but wonderful. And that's where we are right now, and we're just asking your support. And we have no idea if people are going to show up at the next council meeting to protest, but like I said, we have not heard anything from anyone. I've spoken to several people who've had questions, but we've not had anyone angry about this.
My office has, also, my office has received zero phone calls. Our contact information was included in the official notice to the property owners, and we've received zero phone calls with questions as well.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Well, I might add, you, zero phone calls until they get their bill.
No, they've gotten the bill.
Oh, have they got the bill?
They got the bill with the, they know exactly what they're paying.
Now, they have not received... Now, they have not received the actual property tax bill in which they're going to sign, have to pay, write a check, but they have received notice exactly of what the change is from their current rate to the future rate.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I think it's a testament to the work that you've been doing in downtown. And it's just, I can't say thank you enough for the work that you have done, as well as Jeff's team, in really transforming downtown. It hasn't been that many years that I haven't forgotten that things are vibrant, they're clean, they're safe, they're exciting. People are talking about us, and the way it's being managed and taken care of and talking to property owners, business owners, we couldn't be happier to have you. And so thank you for all the hard work. It's been huge, it's a huge endeavor, and it is noticed by many. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I'm in support of the additional assessment from the city. Just because we all have to, as far as business owners and such, we have 1,000 units under construction, or almost 1,000 units under construction. That's extra impact on the downtown. Exciting to have the business right here, but it's going to have an impact as well as ASU opening in the students and staff. So things will be even crazier, yeah, a good crazy. And we appreciate that work that you do in order to keep a step ahead and keep engaged. And I don't think downtown's been in a better place, so thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, your comment raised, reminded me of a thought. There are a significant amount of development happening right now. Our anticipation is that you will not see us in front of this, in front of council for a number of years requesting any change to rates because the new development, as it comes online, is going to increase revenues simply by the fact that what was there today was a vacant lot or an under, you know, an underutilized lot that's going to now have 300 residential units that will have a significant increase in their rate just based off of the property change.
And we didn't make the assessment very high than change in the assessment because we anticipated that. So we didn't get, wanted to get greedy about this. We wanted to be able to just service what was needed.
Good point on that. And I think our next challenge is working on our parking plan and how we can be better situated and have a plan going forward to address the additional density and everything. But we're on our way, and I appreciate your work on that.
Just one last question, Jeff. You mentioned those construction projects under construction, like Opus, for example, Equo Mesa, the grid. So those will be contributing once they're online, correct?
Correct.
And that assessment is driven by their footprint of residential, commercial, or the whole, I mean, for Opus, for example, there's a block.
Yes. So again, it goes back to that, the methodology. So it's based off of building square footage, lot square footage, and linear frontage on the streets. But particularly for the developments that are under construction, their base rate is similar to, is the same as everyone else, but the majority of their assessment is based on a per-unit fee of, I think, $8 per unit for residential. And with 1,000, you know, units coming online, that's a significant increase over something that was simply based off of, you know, the lot square footage.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
Is there an opportunity for those that have court-ordered community service to work in our downtown and help?
They do, they work every single morning with us. They go out with the clean team, they come at 6:30 every morning. Our clean team meets them, they go help empty trashcans and work. And we also do hire from that, too. We've hired several people. We're working with Community Bridges to look at hiring some people also. It's very hard, as we all know, to find staff right now, but we want to give people opportunities. So our job, we believe, is to help the people who we are trying to not have hang out on our sidewalks. And so we work with the community service workers, and they're wonderful, and they have really, really helped keep our downtown clean. We could not cover what we do cover without those.
Good, thank you.
Well, this is, I'll join in just saying thank you. This is, these are all the problems we were hoping to have, right? We've been aspiring to have some of these challenges for several years now. So it's just very rewarding to see it come to pass. Speaking as someone who has paid these assessments for decades, I think I understand why there's, you're not getting pushback. The folks downtown get it more than anyone, you know, what's happening. And as long as we're receiving value for the fees that we're paying, I think you'll see little or no opposition to this. So it is going to be fun. I'm looking forward to taking a larger role. I mean, as these, the challenges like events and parking, and right now the demand for downtown activity exceeds the capacity.
Yes.
And so we need to, you know, staff up and gear up and figure out how we're going to respond to this appetite, literal and figurative, that people have for downtown. So again, these are all great problems. I think it's only going to multiply exponentially once the city plaza park comes online and some of these other amenities that are about to happen once people start moving into some of these large multifamily projects. I think that we're at the beginning of the storm still. So it is absolutely important that we take this step on the 16th to give you the resources you need to address the challenges you're going to continue to have. I'm excited about continuing to expand the boundaries of the district. I mean, I know, but right now we're talking about coming out to Centennial. I mean, I know you go all the way out to Mesa Drive, correct?
Right, correct.
On the east side. You know, Alma, the Alma School portion of Main Street needs help. And I think, I'm anxious to see things happen there in housing and revitalization. I mean, all the way out to the Asian District. So I know, you know, let's take it one step at a time, but I think it's going to be pretty quick that we're going to have to figure out how to maybe get east of Mesa Drive and get out to Alma School and then out to the Asian District as well. But I think the step on May the 16th is an important one that I'm fully supportive of, and I think you'll see all of the downtown residents and business owners cheer what you're doing. So thanks again for doing a great job.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is 1B. This is a presentation to provide direction on the Library Services Department budget. Welcome, Polly. Tony?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. It's nice to be here this morning. I'm Polly Bonnet, Library Director, and here with me today is Tony Garvey, our Management Assistant. And I know that we are the last department to present our budget presentation. So with that in mind, I'll jump right in. All right, our department's purpose is Mesa Public Library supports lifelong learning, empowers individuals, and strengthens the community by providing guidance to free information and resources. And really what it means is we serve as a connection point, whether it's a connection to other people, to experiences, to materials, to resources. We want to function as that central connection point for Mesa residents. And it's so much a heart of what we do that it's at the center of our library vision. That curiosity, learning, connection, inspiration, creativity, and dreaming starts here. And I wanted to share a video that our talented marketing team has created to highlight how this vision actually comes alive at the library. Your library card is like a lifetime membership that has been official for all stages of your life, and it's completely free.
Our libraries are so much more than the books on the shelves. Mesa Public Library is here to support lifelong learning and curiosity. And the way we do that is by connecting people to free information and resources. That's anything from career help to hands-on experiences with Makerspace tools, checking out sports equipment, accessing streaming services and apps on your devices. I mean, we could go on for a while.
This is a place to grow and explore ideas, so it's important to us that everyone fills welcome. We'd love for you to ask us questions. Our library staff are friendly, they're knowledgeable, and can't wait to connect you to the information and resources that you need.
Many people experience the library for the first time as a child, learning to read, but the library has something to offer everyone, no matter what stage of life you're currently in. Our study spaces and meeting rooms are available as a tool to reach your academic and career goals. We have a Makerspace with innovative equipment you can use to explore a new hobby or support your entrepreneurial journey. Our librarians host a variety of events for all ages that are inclusive and entertaining, which is a great way to reach others with similar interests.
We know not everyone can travel to the library, so we make sure to connect with the community by visiting schools and events and offer services that extend beyond our walls.
Your Mesa Public Library card is a reliable source for free education and entertainment at home, or pretty much anywhere you bring a device. Our eBooks, audiobooks, apps, and streaming services are available to you 24/7. Stop in or visit us online to sign up for your library card and check out our services for yourself. You'll be surprised at what you find. And if you have questions or need help along the way, just ask us. We can't wait to see you.
Your library card. So that's one way we wanted to reengage with the community because, as you know, we reopened services last January.
Your library card is like a lifetime.
Like, I know, I know that voice.
Everyone knows the value of a library card now.
But this is a way to reengage with our community as we reopened last year, and then we started our in-person programming in September. But I wanted to take a moment to talk about our highlights over this past fiscal year. This picture that you see was the grand opening of our children's library, the, our children's library at our main branch. That was on July 26th of last year. And it was a project that so many people were looking forward to. We've heard wonderful feedback from our community, and this library is fun, it's inviting, it's become a destination for families. And it's the place where a love of reading begins. So it's a project that was close to a lot of people's hearts. And I want to mention Heather Wolf here. This was something that she was really proud to have been a part of and been able to see finished before she retired. And that was just the beginning. In August, we had the Southeast Library Project kickoff. This will be a 30,000-square-foot library, full-service library, and it's funded through the 2018 General Obligation Bond, situated in the great park of Eastmark. One thing that we want to do is while it is a library that will have all the full services that any of our locations do, there will be an emphasis on technology and connection and taking advantage of those surrounding amenities. We want to complement those and make sure that it's a destination point for the greater southeast library community. And last Thursday evening, there was the first public meeting with Councilmember Thompson and library staff and other project staff, and we had such a great turnout. We have a lot of feedback that we'll be going through with our design team. In September, as I mentioned, in-person programming returned, and that meant that kids were back in the library, the energy. There's nothing like having people in the library. When it was closed, it was very difficult. But they were thrilled to be back in. We heard wonderful feedback again from parents thanking us for returning to our programs. And one thing that we will be doing, we're excited about, is bringing summer reading back after two years of virtual-only programming. That starts in June, and we've already had 500 people, I think, register, which is unusual for already a month out to start summer reading. So that's exciting. And then Dobson, improvements began in February, they're underway. The Dobson community and staff have been fantastic and flexible as all this activity has been taking place because they're really looking forward to that ThinkSpot opening. And one thing that we did this year also at the top of the year was add new digital offerings. We've had requests to expand our variety, our variety of news resources for patrons. So we added Press Reader, which is an app and platform with 7,000 publications that you have access to in a variety of languages and from 120 different countries. And we also added the Wall Street Journal and New York Times Digital Access. And Monterey Park, another library program that you heard about last week, last Thursday. I want to thank our Assistant Library Director, Jesse Sims, for sharing that with you. It's a pilot project and a new library experience that we're excited to offer. And finally, like many other departments, this was a year of welcoming many new staff to our library family. We had retirements, we've had promotions, and many vacancies over this past year that we spent a significant amount of time bringing people onboard. And this is just one more quick video. So with a lot of new members to our library family and people in new positions, there's been really good energy and a lot of, a lot of new beginnings for us. One thing I wanted to share with you is our library circulation. You've heard some of this before, but as we were closed, you can see the impact of that closure in 2020 where we dipped down and only circulated our digital material and offered services through park and pickup and then through our digital collections. And as we reopen the library in January of 2021, you see that gradual increase that we've experienced month over month. We're now at about 80% of what we were circulating from pre-pandemic times. One thing it is telling us is that our readers have returned and they'll continue to return. And then the next metric here is collection turnover rate. So what that does is tell us how our inventory is used. It's the number of times an item turns over in a collection or circulates. And we use that to make decisions about the different material, the size of our collection, and what we add. So you see that increase month over month, starting in 2021, and we expect that it's going to level out close to what our original goal was of six turnovers. And I'm going to hand it over to Tony to talk a little bit about library cards.
Yeah, we knew that coming back from, to full services this past fall was including building back our library card user base. And doing that, September is library card signup month. And as you can see, there was a big bump in the summer of last year, bringing back our summer reading program and highlighting library card signup month. And our goal was to get cards into every person's hands who left the library building. So we do see a bump in the summer of last year, and we're seeing that growth of library card users continuing, going into this fiscal year. Already, we've had almost 20,000 library card signups in just this fiscal year alone. Last year, we had about 10,000 library card signups. So as we continue to grow and expand our services, we do expect to continue to push our library card into the hands as many people as possible because of the services that we have to offer. One of the things that's important to us is we want to reach as many community members as possible. Our marketing team, working with our PIO here at the city, launched a Better Youth for Free campaign in January to highlight all the resources we have to offer. We're excited to continue to register new users, find new ways to increase access and expand reach into our community. And through this, we expect to have 25,000 new cardholders this fiscal year by June 30th.
Ready for me to talk about our in-house visits?
Yes, ma'am.
So as this graph shows, during 2020, we didn't have many in-house visits. Starting in 2021, you see that increase as all locations opened in January. And then in September, as I mentioned, we brought back in-person programming. During that time, since we were recruiting and filling vacancies, we still had about a third of our staff, a little over a third of our staff, that were operating alone and providing those programs. So you can see as that the in-house visitors have increased, our ability to provide more programs across age groups, across locations has increased. And we now have about double the amount of programs and attendees that we did when we started in September. And this next slide is, details how our library is going to contribute to Mesa Climate Action Plan and contribute Plan and contribute to a healthy environment. What we are going to do is take advantage of our librarians' expertise and other local experts to provide programs that are designated as sustainable. And there's a few ways that we'll do that, whether it's through material topic or that adheres to the Mesa Climate Action Plan, six areas of focus. And I'll just touch on this next slide briefly. This is really the amount of programs that we plan to offer over the next year, and that is across locations and age groups. Right now, we still, we've been offering those programs, and we have a wonderful relationship with environmental management sustainability, our transportation department, to offer programs like the Spring Equinox in the Monarch Haven at Red Mountain Library, and then Cycling Fundamentals. I'm very excited to present to you today. I'd like to introduce our new proposed library service. This is a mobile version of our most popular service, services. And what this will allow us to do is have a greater reach to Mesa residents and extend our library footprint across Mesa to equalize opportunities for library patrons. A priority of this program will be to minimize the barriers that exist in certain neighborhoods and reach under-engaged portions of Mesa. Forty percent of Mesa residents live three or more miles away from one of our library branches, which is an obstacle in and of itself. And to raise that awareness, we need to go out into, into the community where people are, and that allows us to also support the Mesa way of innovation and inclusivity. So some of the priorities of the Mesa, this new mobile library, are to serve under-engaged communities. We're exploring library engagement zones throughout the city, and we'll continue to do that as we build this program. School and literacy support through access to a full Mesa Public Library catalog. Community, community events, or we'll be able to promote and introduce services to a diverse audience and new users. And we'll have a mobile ThinkSpot. That's one of our more popular services. So we'll be able to take those pieces of equipment to schools, community centers, and then out into communities. And technology and internet access. This will allow us to help bridge the technology divide or gaps that may exist through Wi-Fi and other technology resources. And then workforce development. We've already reached out to our workforce center partners to talk about potential programming that we can bring to high-need areas. So we are requesting a budget, or requesting a position, excuse me, in our budget to administer and oversee this program. It is funded at the mid-level, including benefits. And now for our budget. I'll just touch briefly on fiscal year 2021. You can see that there was a significant decrease from what the adopted budget was, and that was about $1.5 million in deferred expenses or savings from things that were charged to CARES, the CARES program, and also some of the deferred expenditures because of our library locations being closed. In fiscal year 2122, we have the $8.7 million budget that included carryover for Dobson and Main Library Bond projects. And our year-end estimates, there's approximately a $500,000 savings there, which includes our vacancy savings as we've recruited over this past year. And for next fiscal year, you see one FTE. That's for this proposed position that would oversee the mobile library. And it includes the 5% salary adjustments that we received and also the 5.17% operating budget adjustments that we received. And with those adjustments, we were able to expand new programs, one being shelf-ready. We're very excited about that. It means that some of the material that we get, we're able to get out to the shelf faster, and we're piloting that with our children's programs, or our children's material. And with that, that's our budget presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Polly. I think we do. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First of all, how many employees does the library department have?
We have 96.
96. And our total budget for employees is 82 million?
That's the total FTE count.
Oh, the staff and people.
So that's including part-time.
It's not borrowers, okay.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
I see. Okay, okay. And then just a suggestion, I know we're looking at expansion of broadband, especially into our underserved communities, neighborhoods. If there's a way to, at that time, that we're able to have broadband in these new areas, give the information out that the library is available digitally. So many of those families may not know that they have books and movies and all kinds of... The world can truly open up. They don't have to physically be to the library. I think it could expand the world if there's a way. I don't know how we coordinate that, but it's somehow to just inform them how much is available digitally. So that's my only comment.
And Mayor Vice Mayor, thank you for mentioning that. We are actually exploring ways that we can do that, and we've reached out to IT and to target those areas where we might be able to bring e-cards to the surrounding neighborhoods and for the purpose of accessing those digital resources. So we will be working on it and have updates, hopefully.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Freeman?
So on the mobile library priorities, I see one van here. Do you have that in operation currently?
We do not. We've been working with Fleet Services, and they provided us a few different options, and this is the one that we believed would serve our purposes best. So if it's approved, we'll be working with them to procure that.
Okay. When do you, when do you think you'll stand up that service?
There is an inventory issue with some of the vehicles, so it could be up to a year or more before we'd be able to have that off the ground.
The funding's in place, it's just ordering and waiting for the delivery, so. Well, as soon as possible.
Yes, as soon as possible.
But that might be months away, so.
Yeah, because I'm thinking strategizing some.
Oh, no, this is...
Using this asset in the community.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
You know, council members host and do things, and perhaps it can attend, along with Mabel.
Yeah, it'll be out in the parks, it'll be everywhere, yeah.
Okay, but a year is too long.
We, we're gonna, we're gonna order it, and as soon as we can get it, we'll, we'll put it, we'll stand it up. So it's just part of the economy we live in right now.
So we're looking at a new one versus a used one?
All the U-Hauls are being used right now, so we're gonna try to buy something new. It looks, that's what it looks like to me, yeah. No, we want to go new, and that way we can outfit it for our purposes, so that's the plan.
Okay, thanks.
That, you know, the city of Mesa could really roll up with a great party between Mabel and the mobile library. I mean, as, as we should, right?
Yeah, no, that's, yeah.
That's, that's, it's a wonderful idea. I hesitate to say anything because I don't want to put any more on your plate, because I'm impressed with the big agenda that you're tackling. Thank you very much. It's very, very inspiring. The remote model at the parks, you know, I'm dying to see how that works out. I think that could be wonderful, so really got, my fingers crossed that that's gonna, you're gonna figure out how to, for that to be successful. I was at Eastmark a week or two ago, and the place was just crawling with people. I mean, that, that new library there is going to be full the first day. It's, it's a guaranteed success, so that's just really exciting to locate the, locating the library there, you know, as, instead of a fire station. Very good call, because that, like I say, it's, it's just...
It was one of our easier decisions in life.
Well, it was a very good one, and it's going to be, it's gonna be really exciting to see how utilized that library is gonna be.
It's gonna be awesome.
The Dobson remodel, the, the changes in downtown, I think it's gonna be interesting. We're gonna have to all sit back and, and figure out the future of the new, of the downtown library, because downtown is changing. And with the introduction of the ASU community, all of the multifamily downtown, I think we're just gonna have to sit back and say, how do we have the best downtown library? Because we're probably gonna need to adapt to the, the changing environment downtown. I appreciate you taking on the Climate Action Plan. There's a lot of need, I think, in our community for some adult education on things around water use and zero-scape and recycling, and it seems like the library might be a good place to, you know, working with water resources and others to... For, all of us need to get better at, at understanding the challenges of the, of the Climate Action Plan is trying to address. So maybe a part of figuring out how to get that information through the library system might be a, a way we can do that. But again, if you just, if you do half of the things that you're aspiring to do right now, you'll have a, a very amazing year, and appreciate the energy that you bring into this critical place in our, in our community.
Thank you.
You bet.
We have a great team.
All right, if there's nothing else, let's move on. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, item 1C is a presentation to provide direction on a summary wrap-up of the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget.
I'm Brian Richel. I'm the Assistant Director for the Office of Management and Budget. And just over a month ago, I think the mayor said it best, where on March 31, we kicked off April madness of all of the budget presentations to council. So what I'll do is briefly go over, there have been some changes to the proposed budget when I presented it on the 31st. So I'll just go over some of those changes that you have not seen and some of them that you have seen. But just as a reminder of the budget process that we went through, did the financial forecast in March, and then we went and did the, the council priorities during the strategic planning and incorporated those. And then we went over the annual budget in March and April, along with the capital improvement program. And then the next step, the last step, would be the adoption of the budget, which will be coming up on May 16th and also June 6th. Just as a reminder, we like to follow these financial principles for the general governmental funds. I won't go through all of them, I'm sure you've seen them, but we follow these and incorporate these when we are doing the, preparing the budget. And then also the same goes for the, the utility fund. We follow these financial principles when looking at the, the utility fund and, and the budget. So a couple of changes to the proposed budget that were not presented but have gone through the process. In meeting community needs and growth, the city added a construction inspector, and this is due to the significant growth and the increase in the development activity. We have, we're not seeing a downturn, and so we do need a, another construction inspector. Also added is a government relations director position. This is to support a lot of the federal and state initiatives that are coming through with, through the state and fed with all the, the CARE stuff and ARPA and everything else that's going on. So we've added those two new positions to the proposed budget, and these were throughout April, and so they were not included in some of the department presentations. Next?
Brian, I'm sorry to interrupt. So the addition of a government relations director, is that in the office along with Scott and Miranda?
Yeah, working with Miranda, working with.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we're just spread pretty thinly right now, so. Now, these are changes to the proposed budget, but they were included in department budget presentations. So I won't go through everything, but a lot of these were to the utility fund. We were still working on the utility fund after the proposed budget, but these were positions and equipment that was included in the, the, in their presentations to you Next is a recap of things that were included in the proposed budget that I included in that presentation. Just as a reminder, we have the public safety personnel, police and fire, the academies, also the creation of the domestic violence court, and then also a creation of the special events team, along with some, the small business assistance support and downtown facade grant match. This slide is mainly of transportation and transit of the pilot program for the Fiesta Buzz, the additional bus stop shelters. And then also the big one is the transit-oriented development grant match for the street car extension feasibility study. And then also the increase to transportation's budget for the street overlay program, and then also the alleyway and graffiti cleanup. We added two staff. And then also the Mesa Climate Action Plan implementation. We set aside the $10 million to, to implement the Mesa Climate Action Plan. And then on the utility side, which was included in the proposed budget, just some of the big ones there is the, the expansion of the Signal Butte. We've added a, a staff member for that one. The central reuse pipeline, we've added a few staff on that, but also some equipment for the, the maintenance of it. And then also on the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant, we've added some staff for that, once that, the repairs and maintenance on that is done. And then also some, that was provided in the proposed budget, was dividing the solid waste trucks between West and East Mesa Service Centers to help reduce the windshield time and miles driven by those trucks. And with that wrap-up, the adoption timeline, so on May 16th will be the capital improvement program, public hearing and adoption, along with the tentative adoption for the annual budget. On June 6th will be the annual budget and secondary tax levy public hearing, and then council will take action on the adopting the final budget for the city for fiscal year 2223. And then on June 20th would be the secondary property tax levy adoption. And with that, that's kind of a brief wrap-up of April and everything that you guys, that council has seen in the presentation and was included in the proposed budget. And I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I have quite a few questions on Slide 7 about, first of all, will be around fire. We talked a little bit about the Gap pilot program, and are we including the positions in order to do that program?
We just met again yesterday, so we're still working through what the proposal's gonna look like. So most likely, it's gonna be two-man crews that are gonna be servicing the Gap. So we're still, that was the next kind of follow-up, was to kind of decide how many we need in that area and what kinds of equipment we'll be using. So we'll be coming back to council maybe for a supplement to the budget and outside of the proposed budget. We'll allocate some dollars in there for that, but we don't have, I can't tell you today exactly. Fire Department wanted to go back, look at the demand in that area, and then come back with a proposal.
Okay, so that's not included in the budget?
No, it'd be an addition to this.
And we're gonna come back to council?
We'll come back and brief council on that, yeah. I don't see that it's, you know, it'll just be reallocating some of the existing resources. I mean, we have personnel, we'll just have to reallocate from other responsibilities. It'll mostly be probably some overtime, but it'll also be just some new equipment, our vehicles that will have to be used for those two-person crews.
So it won't be additional personnel?
Well, we don't, we, the only way we're gonna add a personnel is run them through the academy, right? And if it's a sworn position, it takes a year and a half. So we'll have to work about reallocating those resources with what we have right now. In order to do a pilot program within the next year, there's physically no way to go and start up and bring out a new employees in that amount of time. We'll have to build that in eventually into the future. Right now, we'll have to figure out how to reallocate from other assignments and probably add some additional overtime to cover that time that we'll have. We're gonna limit it to most likely a 40-hour week, not a typical 24/7, or 24-hour shift, so we've got to work through all those details.
So that won't affect our current year budget?
No.
We're not gonna exercise the pilot programs in this?
Well, we will. We'll just probably come, it will, when we come back, we'll, we usually, in all the times we set up a budget, we set out an amount a little above what we actually are talking about here to give us contingencies in the future. And I, I think the, besides the pilot program, it's not gonna, we'll have plenty of ample contingency that we can absorb that outside of this specific budget approval.
So I just wanted to make sure, within what we're doing over this next year, that we provide, since the model is not decided exactly, that we provide in our, in our budget the most expansive, I mean, there's a lot if we do whatever the makeup is, right? So that if we decide that more positions are needed, whatever that model is, that we have it provided in the budget and not running the pilot at, not at an adequate level with personnel, hours, equipment?
Yeah, I'm not, not concerned, because it's, it's a pilot program. We're trying to keep it pretty lean so that we can experience it and have the experiment of trying to figure out what works and having that flexibility. So I think, you know, the Fire Department budget is huge. There's tremendous amount of flexibility within that budget with... There's tremendous amount of flexibility within that budget with overtime and positions. So I don't, I'm not worried that a pilot program of two persons, you know, units and maybe two or three of those units is not going to have a dramatic impact on either the fire department budget or the city's overall operational budget. It's not, if we were standing up a whole new fire station, that'd be a different story. But we're only talking about a small pilot program that's going to have, you know, serving an area two and a half square miles. So it's not, it's not something I don't, I'm not worried about from a budget standpoint that we wouldn't have the resources to address it.
I'll try, I'll try.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
So, so I'm trying to interpret what you're saying, Chris, but from what I understand, even if we stood up a unit today with overtime personnel, probably civilian, I mean sworn personnel, then that could stand up immediately and, and get into service until the fire academy starts and we create some recruits, because I see here for station 222, that station's not going to start to be built for a period of time. And then you're going to have extra personnel unless you man that truck with those personnel, those 12 personnel at another station until, you know, meeting the needs, until that station opens like we did with 221.
Yeah, I mean, at some point, that's why it's a pilot program, right? We don't know how many of these two person units will ultimately be the best, you know, way to service it. And we're trying to keep the hours to 40 hour weeks. So we, we can, that's much different than the model we have today. So when we look at that and decide what that is, we need some time to experience with that, and then we'll come back probably next year or maybe even a mid-year and suggest, you know, if we feel comfortable, we understand what the model is and what it could be, we'll do that. But even talking with fire yesterday, they want some time to really kind of work through the model and make sure and try different, you know, pilot programs and make sure what works best. And it's not just the response team, it's also the protocols at dispatch and making sure those are accurate and we're sending the right groups. So we've got a lot to work on, we've got to order it. You know, we don't even have the vehicles, right? It's going to take.
A year.
You know, it could take a while for us to get the vehicles too. But we're going to spend time working through the protocols. We've already met with the medical director, fully supportive, thinks this is a, it's effectively used in other communities in the valley, so we're going to try to figure out what works for Mesa.
I know I've said it before, I'll just reiterate that on a pilot program, I really don't want to have it like it being a partway test because in the instance, we're just kind of playing with it. What we're doing is possibly playing with people's lives. We got to make sure that it's absolutely robust and being able to provide the coverage that we need in an effective way. And then we could scale back from there if necessary, but I hate to start in like a halfway type of, you know, scenario that is not going to serve the residents.
We, we are going to probably start without really know, you know, kind of pilot program. But remember, we're not taking away, we're not doing anything to reduce the current level of service. The way services being provided today will continue during the pilot program. You know, for a period of time, we even suggested it's redundant, that we, we, we dispatch the way we do today plus a pilot program, just so that we make sure that we understand what it's going to take. We, we need to understand the protocols coming out of dispatch are going to really drive the understanding of what kinds of calls can these units handle. And for a while, we may just dispatch everything like we do today until, you know, the captain's out there find, decide, yeah, we really don't need to dispatch an engine every time because the medical unit is getting their, you know, four minutes ahead of anybody else and they can handle the call. So we, no one's talking about putting anything at risk. And we're not, we still have a tremendous, we're not talking about backing off of the services we provide today. The idea is to supplement what we have to do today and get to these calls much faster than we are today. So that's, I guess I want to, I don't want to, I mean, I think we are going to have to have the leeway to let us figure out what works best, but we can do that within the context of our current response today for a period of time. We don't want to put anybody at risk and we don't expect that we would. My concern is today, if we just keep doing things the way we're doing today, these gaps are getting services beyond the standard that the rest of the city experiences. So if we do nothing, we are putting, you know, we're, we're essentially fine with the idea that there's these areas that are getting extended responses. We're not, all we're suggesting is putting additional supplemental response teams in these gaps. And frankly, they may be getting a significant higher level of response than other parts of the city. So we do need to have that opportunity to find this out. But again, it's supplemental. It's not, we're not reducing the services because there will be calls in the gap that we're not going to send a two person crew to because we're going to say, no, it's, it's, the protocol says we need to send that engine just like we do today. So that's kind of how we're going. These are low acuity calls, that's what we're sending. And that's the experience we need to run through. And again, this is, I'd like to say this is something nobody's ever done. It's not. I mean, it's happening all over the valley. And so we're learning from them too and trying to figure out how it best works for Mesa.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure the decisions that we need to make for those programs, the budget will support it?
Oh, yeah, no, this.
And that we're not restricted by the budget in order to be, have the best solution available?
Sure, I, this is a small area. It's not, you know, we're not going to put a new fire station in it. We're not going to, we're trying to find creative ways to solve this because there are many, there are other areas in the city, we have similar areas outside our service area that are just not, don't justify a new fire station, but they could use a different level of service, especially for our lower acuity calls, and that's all we're trying to do.
So if we went to a 12 person crew and a four, or, you know, the most generous model, we would be able to support it in the current budget for this coming year?
Yeah, I think at some point, if we, if that's where we're at, it doesn't make sense to add more because we're, now we're kind of overcompensating, right? We're tremendous, we're over, you know, we're now putting in tremendous amount of resources in a small area that is now disproportionate to the rest of the city. So I think we're trying to balance out the response that we see throughout the rest of the city. So, you know, putting, you know, four, four man crews inside a two and a half square mile area and they're calling, you know, getting two calls a day, doesn't make a lot of sense either. So there's a balance here of resources and response, and response services at the same time. So, yeah, I mean, part of what we do is look at efficiency and effectiveness. And so at some point, even in public safety, we have to manage the dollars and the resources and be reasonable about it. But again, that's why we want to supplement what we're doing, not replace what we're doing with the pilot program so that we can find out if this is maybe a lower cost effective way to provide these services.
I might add, Chris, are you using the analytics? I mean, years ago, we did the, we had some grant funding, I talked to you about grant funding way back when initially we had paramedics with nurse practitioners and also PAs. And we, we did all those analytics and then we progressed to a TRD model. And do we have all those statistics to help facilitate the pilot program and make it better?
We have more analytics today than we've ever had. And that's why we, again, I've said this before, nobody identified the gap until the analytics were done and we said, oh, wow, there are some areas in the city that are not getting the same level of service, especially on response times, other parts of the city. Is there another alternative to addressing that? So yes, and the idea, I think what we're trying to work on is how do we address those smaller areas that are outside the standard for the rest of the city, that are small, they're not large, but they're complex sometimes because of the layout of the, I don't know, it's a, maybe a multifamily or, or the road systems or whatever, and placing these smaller units in those gaps to provide the service. So I think, again, this is supplementing what we're doing. We're not, there, there's still going to be engines running into this area when there's a critical incident, high acuity, absolutely. I mean, they're going to be rolling in with everyone, just like they do today. We're not suggesting that, that two person crews are going to take on everything, no, not at all.
Right, right.
And to follow up, you know, I'm, I'm trying to remember what our, what our heat map looked like for those, those gap areas. And I know that out in our neighborhood, there was a lot of red. I think in Lehigh, there was a lot of red. I think over where the new station's going to be, there's quite a bit of red. And, you know, for the, for the short term, if there's a way that we can shore up those neighborhoods, I know like in our neighborhood, yesterday we had, our next door neighbor had a medical event and I, I heard the truck coming, you know, because you hear the rumble of the, of the engine. And I went out and it was actually a Gilbert unit that came out, so thank God for mutual aid, but they had an AMR ambulance there to load him up and, and take him, you know, to, to wherever, to the hospital. Later that evening, there was a Mesa, I guess it was on a 209 engine truck came out, did the exact same thing and transported him again. And so as we look at these areas, if there's a, a short term fix to maybe turn those areas yellow instead of red, where we can get some units in there, you know, and I think it has to be more than two, more than two people. I know we had some of our officers responded to a house fire and they were first on scene and went in and there was a person that was incapacitated, that was 300 pounds. And you had one officer, you know, trying to move this person and get him out of the house and it was almost impossible. You know, and I, I want to make sure that we're not going to injure one of our personnel or one of our employees.
Yeah, we wouldn't send a two person low acuity. And they don't do that in Peoria, they don't do that in Gilbert, they don't do it in any other cities that do these. We still send the engine with four persons or the MR unit with four persons, and they are all hazards trained and responsive. It's just that when you look at the analytics in this area, 90.
When I get, and I get it, I get the analytics, I'm, I'm looking at short term while we're getting people.
Oh, that, oh, I see what you're saying, sure.
How do we shore up?
Yeah.
Turn those red areas to yellow?
Here's the theory, right? If we can take the low acuity calls off of the engines and the MR units, and because there's so much of that, and that's what is holding up the system from being able to get to, you know, if station, if ladder 209 is off taking care of a medical, low acuity medical call, it can't respond to the fire at Superstition Springs Mall.
Right.
Right? So we have to bring in, so the theory is pick off the long hanging fruit, go get the low acuity calls with two person, all medical units working 40 hours a week. And then that more likely, we've improved the probability that that ladder truck is in the station and can respond to those higher acuity. Now, does, is it going to happen all the time? No, but we're going to improve the, the probability statistically by taking care of those other low acuity calls, because that is our biggest hang up on response. At the end of the day, well, it's both just getting through the areas, but it's the day, because the number of calls continues to grow and increase for medical calls, especially low acuity medical calls for every station, that now when the bigger call comes and when we need it all hazards, they're spending most of their time or they're going to be another call. And that's all we're trying to do. And it's been done, it's, we're, we're not trying to change any, we're not trying to reduce the current level of service. We're supplementing what's there to provide a lower level call, to take off those minor calls so that those big trucks can be in the station when that big call comes in. And, and I think we just need the time and it's being done. The protocols are developed. Fire said, yep, we got the protocols, they know exactly what that is. Our medical director is very comfortable with us. She, we talked about it, she gave us examples of where it's being done across the valley. She's the Arizona emergency medical staff person, doctor, so she, she knows what's happening. And so I think our staff felt comfortable. We just got to build out the model a little bit more, the vehicles, set up the schedules, figure out where we're going to pull these individuals from. But I think we just need a chance to give it a try to supplement what we're doing, not reducing the level of service that we have today. I mean, we kind of brought this issue up. Nobody was complaining about it before. I mean, sometimes I wish I hadn't even brought it up and just said, never mind, it's just the way we are. We have parts of the city aren't the same, but we wanted to try to find a way to do a better job of improving service in Mesa.
Thank you. Any other comments on this agenda? Mr. Freeman?
I do have some questions. Brian, how's the financial forecast for our city? Are we pretty stable? We got good income streams? Everything looking well?
So for the, the revenues, as I was presented in the, the proposed budget, we are, the revenues, the sales tax is still coming in very strong. The only concern is the inflation for the expenses. And so it's kind of, they call it a double edged sword is where we, with the sales tax. Sales tax is coming in strong, but that's from the purchases, from the high, from the high inflation too. So we're just keeping an eye on that. But the revenues, we do, as mentioned in the, the principles for the general governmental fund, we do on the, the financial forecast in that fifth year, we try to keep it between 10 and 15%. And I believe right now we're above that. And so we do try to keep it in there as for the stability of the, the general governmental fund. And we also take a look at that for the utility fund also, the stability of the fund. We know there's some significant projects coming on that need equipment and personnel. So we keep looking at that. But yes, the, the, the revenue coming in right now currently is coming in good.
Brian, why don't you talk a little bit about the anticipation of a recession, how you built that in?
So yes, Mayor, Council, we do have in the forecast, and we have done this for the past, since I've been at the city, is we do forecast a, a recession or what we call a correction. And right now, we have it forecasted, starting in fiscal year 23, 24, so the next fiscal year budget, the following fiscal year budget, and then going into 24, 25, and then growing out of that. So what, what we do is we take a look at previous recessions of, I won't say mild recessions, but just regular recessions, the early 90s, the early 2000s, those recessions, and see what the impact was to the city itself. And then reduce our revenues, sales tax, incomes, things like that. And, but we do still keep the expenses growing with the personnel and everything else. So we do have that in the forecast for 23, 24, and we still do have a, a good fund balance reserve going out past that with it growing out.
Follow up question on the enterprise fund. How much money will we transfer over to the public safety side? What's that anticipated number?
So the anticipate, I would have to, so the total amount is the 30% of the operating revenues of the utility fund. So right now, I believe it's around $115 million. So 25% of that would move over. So I'm thinking a rough estimate in my head would probably be about 75 to 80 million would be going over to the general fund as a 30% of that 115. And so as, as a reminder, the, the combined public safety, fire and police are roughly three and a half million or $350 million total budget. So it does, that 80, 85 million dollars does help support the, the public safety.
Good, good. Recently, and maybe Mike can answer this, but recently you met with a bonding group to maybe change some of our interest rates and things to, how did that even go?
We haven't gone to the market yet.
We haven't what?
With the mar, we haven't sold the bond yet.
Okay, but have you met with them and, and are we going to move forward?
We've done the ratings.
The ratings, so how, how are we doing there?
We don't, we don't have those yet. Those won't come till next week, I think?
Yeah. Okay, all right. And are there any plans to defees any bonds or make any payments earlier?
Well, we're looking at it, but the interest rates are moving in the wrong direction. So we probably won't be able to do, we won't be able to do as much as we thought at, at any, but we'll assess that at the time.
Okay. And just for my knowledge, remind me, what's our PS PRS payment annually to the fund?
So I think last year we presented at the, and we'll have another public safety retirement system we have to adopt. The city is annually has to adopt the, the policy for that. So currently, as presented last, last year, and we are moving forward with it, is we have a steady payment. And I believe we mentioned that, I believe in the proposed budget, one of the presentations. And there's a steady payment that we, the, are doing and it's roughly 78 to 80 million right now for the next 20 years. And what that'll hopefully help do is stabilize that payment to where we can budget it in the forecast and know what that amount is, rather than waiting for the actuarial reports and things like that to, and if there's a significant spike. But with the modeling and the third party that we consult with, right now, it's eight, it's set at $80 million for the next 20 years and it should significantly save the city some money in the long term.
Didn't we have like a 25 year payment plan now we're down to 20 or?
Well, yeah.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, yes, we had, we, we were at, we had between 20 20 and 30, and we decided, the city decided to do a 25. So right now, we're at 21 on that payment plan.
All right. Thank you.
I have a-
Yes?
Brian, I have a couple more questions. First of all, the total budget with all the financials, when will we see that posted or will that be posted for the May 16th or whatever?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, that'll be coming up here. We're still finalizing all the numbers. This is just kind of the wrap-up of everything.
Okay.
And so that would be attached to the May 16th tentative budget adoption.
Great. On the small business support, while we're on this page, small business support, assistance support, is that in, for the studios, the third floor we're doing there, or is it an economic development office?
Right, those $300,000 in the economic development office today in their operating budget to continue ongoing, right?
Ongoing.
We're funding it again. I think last year, we did it one time and we, we're continuing again this year. But that's separate apart from the capital side to finish out the space at the studios. So there's kind of a, a home for the, and be able to expand the program when that opens. But we're just continuing our commitment of the small business assistance at $300,000.
So that, was it the second floor, third floor? What, second floor, I guess, in the studios where we're going to make a small business assistance center? That won't be opening until next year? I mean, what's our-
Yeah, I don't know if I have a schedule. I think we just procured the contractor, right? So we'll, we'll have to update you on that. I don't know what their schedule is yet.
Okay, okay.
It should be a little bit faster. Oh, yeah. There you go. Thanks, Jeff.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, we just, we are in, in process of design concept right now. We, so we have a contract for the designer. We should be done with the design in the next three months, after which we'll go out to market for contractors to complete the work. I imagine it'll be a nine-month build-out, similar, well, actually, I take that back because we already did the shell. It should be a six-month build-out. So it is likely that we could be by the end of this, this year that, or early next year, that we'll be open.
Yeah, end of the fiscal year.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the down, stay there. Downtown facade grant match. So we received $300,000 from the federal, federal grant. So we're matching that as far as the city. So we'll have $600,000 in that fund for the improvements.
So that's the general fund match. So that's, and then on top of that, we have the ARPA dollars.
Right.
How much are we at right now?
Oh, that's right.
Currently, we're looking at around $4.4 million in ARPA dollars. We, we just went out and released a survey yesterday to all the downtown business and property owners to gauge their interest. My staff walked the street with DMA business support staff to, to let them know about the survey and get their, and get them moving on it. The response was extremely positive yesterday. They came back saying that there's a ton of interest in the program. So we hope to be able to build that and come back to you before summer break with our, our plan.
So combined, we'd have $5 million.
Okay.
Between the grants-
We have the grants.
And, and the ARPA dollars.
The match from the general fund, and then we have the ARPA dollars we set aside for downtown.
Right.
Okay. That's great.
Yes, for the facade program specifically, yeah?
Great. Wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Ready?
In the past, I know we had information around the average homeowner comparison with other cities. I know it's hard to match apples to apples to other cities, but maybe looking at like Tucson or similar-sized cities, where are we doing on that end as far as, you know, there's, there's been publications that Mesa's still affordable for individuals when you compile all the taxes and all the, all the things that you have to pay here. And so just wondering what, where we're at on that kind of average comparison scale.
Yeah.
Knowing that, you know, other cities in the valley are smaller than us, other than Phoenix, sometimes that's hard to compare, but like other-sized cities like Mesa.
So Mayor Council, we're ready. We will update that and we do that probably right at the beginning of the fall. So that we're doing that with our watered sewer rate. And because that's when we bring those rate increases, because that's the context in which we kind of run that comparison. I mean, we can give it to you today, but it probably won't be good until, you know, a few months. So, yeah, so we will do that. We'll update that if we get to that part of the conversation.
Thank you. Seems like we, we can speculate about the possibility of a recession, but what we do know is that ARPA dollars are going away next few, over the next couple of budget years. And so I'm just, I'm a little nervous, you know, that this influx of federal funding that we've been able to take advantage of through the pandemic, once that's out of the, off the books, I'm, I'm just afraid of the, how we're going to adjust to that, particularly in some of the human service areas. And as we indicated, I mean, things like downtown one-time projects. So I, I hope we're figuring out how to appropriately wean ourselves off of the ARPA dollars so that we don't fall off a cliff when that happens.
Thank you, Mayor. And for that reason, I, when we talked to Council early on, when ARPA really talked about it as investments, kind of as much as one-time as possible investments. And so, you know, that's why, you know, finishing out the studios is a one-time investment. The facades is a one-time investment. You know, a lot of the other expenses, we, we've tried to, just like you said, Mayor, we're trying not to create a ongoing operational commitment or expectation from those. And so we're, we're trying to be very careful with that. And so, and we will probably, maybe in the next month or so, we'll, let's come back and give you an update on where we are with ARPA. We'll have the next dollars should come to us this month, next, yeah, in the next week or two. Well, so we'll have the full amount of dollars, 105 million. And we can show you what we spent to date and what the plans are for the next couple of years.
Great. Thank you. Council, any other comments on budget? All right. Thank you. I appreciate the work that went into, by all the departments during the budget hearings. It was, I hate to say that I'm going to miss it, but because I know it was a lot of work for everyone in this, in this room, but it was particularly informative. So thank you.
We'll be back next year.
Yeah, we'll be back next year.
Every year, always.
All right. Next item on our agenda is current event summary and conferences attended. I know you've all been very engaged. Anything you'd like to share with us? Vice Mayor?
Yeah. On, I think it was Tuesday, I attended the Large Cities, the NLC, National League of Cities Large Cities Council, in which, that was a Zoom meeting, in which we discussed what so many of the cities equivalent to our size are doing around homelessness. So that was very informative. Last night, I also attended the Mayor's Youth Council. I'm sure you'll be seeing the graduation of the Mayor's Youth Council. And that's always inspiring. And then I don't want to cover it all, but the Fallen Officer Memorial last night is very meaningful and I appreciate the sacrifice that goes on daily of the families who have officers giving, giving of themselves to protect our community and especially those who have had a lost one. So I appreciate the memorial every year to stop and acknowledge all officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. You're good? Yes, you know, that was a, a great event that we were, many of us attended at the Fallen Officer Memorial, an annual event. And I think we just, let's say the names. I mean, Sergeant Mendoza, Officer Pollard, Marshall Peterson. These are individuals that, you know, we need to honor every year. And so thank you for mentioning that, Vice Mayor. Also, yesterday was a busy day, in addition to the Mayor's Youth Committee graduation, which again, that's a great opportunity. If you have juniors and seniors in high school that are a little bit interested in government, we'd love to have them included in the Mayor's Youth Committee. And I know we're looking for ways to expand the program, to have more of a, of a youth leadership program in our city. So that's a little bit in transition, but it's a great program. So please encourage your youth to be a part of that. Yesterday, we had the, a groundbreaking out at Meta. It's hard to describe the scope of this project, but it will be a couple of thousand construction jobs, you know, over the next couple of years out there. And I think probably in perpetuity, that campus is going to always be under construction. So it's a very significant impact in, in our economy out in southeast Mesa. I was gone earlier this week, but I, I just want to thank folks that, that last week were involved in the Mayor's Interfaith Breakfast. I thought it was a particularly useful event. We talked to a lot of the faith groups and nonprofits about the challenges that are ahead of us with Title 42 possibly going away and the influx in asylum seekers that's going to create. And that is going to impact our community along with the efforts to house refugees, not only from, from all over. You know, there's, you can think of several places right now that the United States is receiving refugees from. So appreciated the, the nonprofit and, and faith community coming to, to give more education about that. Also, I want to give a shout out to the Mesa Rotary Club. They celebrated their 100-year anniversary, a year late. But that's, we should recognize that that's an organization that's really been intimately involved in all things good in our city for the last 100 years. And just want to thank them for their ongoing engagement in, in the, in the city. Speaking of, not to steal Mr. Brady's thunder, but I think on, on future meetings and things to put on your schedule, similar to the Fallen Officer Memorial yesterday, beginning today through May 9th at the Mesa Art Center, there's going to be an exhibit called Remembering Our Fallen Memorial. These are, are servicemen and women that have been lost over the last few years. Very, a very good exhibit. Over 5,000 individuals are honored in this exhibit. So if, I would encourage you to check that out at the Mesa Art Center, beginning today through May the 9th.
And it's a national tour. So it's just significant that we're able to get it here in Mesa as it continues throughout the rest of the country. So.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Brady. You're right. It, it, very high quality, national tour. We get it for that period of time. So it'd be worth your time to check that out. If there's nothing else, Mr. Brady, what does our schedule look like for future meetings?
We will see you on Thursday, May 12th at 7:30 in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Ready. All of the people, please say aye. Aye, thank you. We are adjourned.